We are very fortunate today to have with us two of the selectmen who are -- I like to call selectmen all sorts. I don't know if I consider Mr. Chigal a selectman person. But they are here to talk to us and we've got an add bonus. We also have the police chief, which all of you have met.
Abbott.
I have an Abbott.
I have an Abbott.
I have an Abbott.
Some of you have had the opportunity to meet Chief Celia from the fire department. And... We have Lisa Patchigo, who is one of our selectmen, and Mr. Baumgaunder, who is another one of our selectmen. Mr. Sadak is a third selectman, and he's not here today. So I want you to make sure that you listen very carefully to their answers. And don't repeat any -- if you listen to the question, if you hear your question, don't ask that question. Try to ask a question that no one has asked before. And be good audiences. Can you do that for me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow, you guys are already ready, huh? We're gonna do something a little bit different this year. When you have a question and you get called on, can you go to the microphone right here? Okay? And just say your name and ask the question, okay? Because this is all gonna be video, and you guys will be able to see it when you go home. And your parents will be able to see it, okay?
On the TV.
On the TV. On the cable channel. What channel?
90.
90?
9.
Channel 9. Okay, the cable channels. You'll all be on the cable channel. You'll be superstars today. The other thing I'm gonna ask you guys very quietly is to make sure, like Mrs. Brierley said, to listen to the question. And if you've heard your question before, think of another question, okay? And you can't listen if you're talking, so you have to be really quiet and listen to your question. All right? So we're gonna go one at a time, and I'm gonna go first, and then I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Baumgaunder. And then we'll go right down the list. So I will pick you as a Boston Celtics.
My name is Trevor. Hi Trevor. What is a selectman?
What is a selectman? A selectman is the town fathers or the town mothers. And what they do is they take care of the town. They oversee all of the departments. We're a team. See, we have some components of the team. We have the fire department and the police department. We also have the health department, the building department. A whole bunch of people all together, the highway department. We work as a team. But in order to have a team, you kind of have to have a captain of the team, right? So we're kind of the captains of the team. Okay? Thank you for your questions.
If anybody wants.
How about you in the back with the pitch? There's a tree. That's you.
My name is Martin. How long do you work?
Each day or a week, not much. The selectmen in the town are non-full-time employees. We're elected employees, and there is really no specific amount of hours that we work. Sometimes it's a long week, sometimes it's a short week. But we meet often enough and discuss issues and little problems going on in town. They make decisions on how to solve it. But there's really no specific hours. All right, we'll stick with this side over here, this young lady in the orange.
I'm Amelia.
Hello.
How do you help our school?
Well, Ms. Chigal talked about being a team. And as part of that team, the police department's responsibility is to patrol the area, to make sure the people that are unwanted don't come into the school or come onto your playground. Additionally, you probably see a police car out in front of the school very often. And the police officer there is running radar and doing traffic enforcement to slow people down so they don't want to student or crash into a school bus. And then the fire department helps. The fire department conducts their inspections to make sure there's no fire danger for you. So that's part of it. Okay, I'm over here. Right there in the white green shirt.
Hi, I'm Tia.
Hold there.
Is it hard to work?
Is it hard to work in the town? No, I'm very easy to work in the town. I consider it an honor to work in this town. I've been there all my life, and there's nothing greater than working in this town.
Little girl with a scarf on.
Where?
What is your name?
Emma.
What is it?
Anna.
Anna, hi Anna. Where do I work? My real job or my selectmen job? My selectmen job, I work all over the town. Sometimes I'm at town hall, sometimes I'm visiting the police department, sometimes I'm visiting schools, sometimes I'm visiting the fire department. So our job is all over town.
This young lady with the pretty things on. Who's blush?
Hi Megan.
Hi Megan, how are you?
How did you get chosen to be a selectman?
Pardon me?
How did you get chosen to be a selectman?
Well, there's a process where it's an elected office, which means you have to run or campaign for it. And the people in Free Town elect you. So you can make a decision. You can make a decision. I think you have to be 18. You become a selectman, and you put together a campaign committee. And you go out and knock on doors and advertise and tell people you want to be a selectman. And then they have a big meeting called an election, and people vote who they want to be a selectman. Sometimes nobody runs against you, sometimes just three people. And if you're fortunate, they elect you. Did I answer it? All right, we're gonna go to the back. That gentleman with the gray t-shirt on.
What is the town hall like?
Can you repeat that, please?
What is the town hall like?
What is the town hall like?
Oh, the town hall? I'll let the selectmen describe the town hall.
No, that was your question.
The town hall is an old building. The town that you live in is the third oldest community in the United States. It was incorporated in 1682. Way, way back. So being the third oldest community, we have an old building. And the town hall was built, I think, in 1882. So it's an old, old building, and it looks like an old building. We can do to maintain it. And there's certainly plans in place to replace it, hopefully one day. But it's an old building with offices that staff several employees to help manage the town. It's an old white building. And you're welcome to come for a tour anytime. We'd like to have it. Okay, um, right, from here.
How long can you be selected? Yeah, hey?
I'm gonna do a picture again.
How long can you be selected?
I want to be a selectman.
I'd want anything like you.
Yeah, I guess as long as you can go to the end, I guess.
Yeah, we don't -- there's sometimes called something that's a little bit of a, but it's called term limits. It means that you can only be something for a certain amount of time, okay? Like in baseball, you can only be like on a league for a certain amount of time until you have to go up to the next league. Well, it's kind of like that. But we don't have that in town. So we can be selectmen as long as people like you and you do the right thing. Okay? Go ahead.
Colin. Why do you have this job?
Why do I have this job? I have this job for many reasons. The first reason is because I feel like I want to help people. And I feel like I can help people. So that's why I like doing what I do. It's because you can help many people. You can help school age children like yourselves by promoting the school budget. You can help the fire department by getting them newer equipment. You can help the police department by putting more men on the street. You can help the highway department by giving them the tools necessary to clean up the parks, mow the grass at the athletic fields. So I like doing all of those things. I like having the challenge to be able to do those things for you and for everybody in town. Thank you.
But this young lady here in the pink and green and red.
My name is Brooke. What is the most important issue in Free Town right now?
I honestly can't say there's one issue more important than the rest because as Lisa said, you have to look at all the departments and all the infrastructure of the town and make decisions based on what you think is best for that particular thing. Important now in the town, certainly education's important. We want to make sure everybody has a good education. And we also want to make sure we have a completely staffed fire department and police department. And we also want to make sure our buildings are maintained. And decisions like that that affect each and every one of us. So to say there's one important issue, I can't say there's one, but there's several things we look at all the time. How about this young lady with the white shirt?
My name is Dylan.
Good afternoon.
What made you want to do your job?
When I was a younger man, I was really interested in being a police officer. And then I volunteered as an auxiliary police officer here in Free Town. And I really got to enjoy what was involved in the job. Helping people, arresting people. I really enjoyed the job. It was fun. It is still fun. I love it. Well, thank you for your question. Okay, the young lady in the gray shirt.
How many hours do you work a week?
How many hours do I work a week? Well, I start at 6:30 at the fire station. I go home about 5:00, so I'm five.
But what's important to remember is that if he leaves at 5:00 in the afternoon and there's a fire at 7:00 PM at your dinnertime, he goes right back to work. So he really is working around the clock. Young lady in the red.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, me. It's been a while.
My name is Andrew.
Hello.
What are the daily things you do in being a selectman?
What a what?
The daily things you do as being a selectman.
The daily things I do as being a selectman? Some days are more crazy than another, right? Some days you have a big test, right? And you have to study for them. Some days you're just reviewing things in school, so you're okay. So daily, my things change. But what I do daily is, you see that young lady over there in the first seat right there with the blonde hair and a really red face because I'm picking on her right now? She's the one that tells me what to do. She's our administrative assistant. Her name is Mrs. Gold. And she tells us what to do. So the first thing I do every day is call her. And then she gives me everything to do. So it might be chatting with the police chief. It might be talking to the principal at the school. It might be signing warrants. Warrants are those things that pay the bills. Do your parents pay bills? The town has to pay bills. So every day, we do something a little bit different. But every day, I promise you, I call her.
This young man with the Texas t-shirt.
Do you live in Free Town?
Right in Free Town.
Well, that's close to both, right?
Yeah. I do live in Free Town. I wasn't born in Free Town. I was born in New York. Took a job up here and bought a house in Free Town. And I've been living here, I don't know, 18, 19 years. And I'm gonna say this about this town we live in. I travel all over with international and national responsibility. I've gone all over the country. This is my favorite place in America to live, right here in Free Town.
I forgot to say my name. I am Stephen Legere.
Well, nice to meet you, Brooke. All right, let's try third row, the old man with the gray shirt on.
My name is Addison.
Hello.
Where was the Free Town State Forest founded?
Well, I don't know when the state officially declared it a state forest. But as you probably -- have you been out in the forest at all? It's about 4,000 acres, a lot of dirt roads. At one time, prior to World War II, a bunch of young men known as the Civilian Conservation Corps helped clear those roads, cut down trees. It's about 4,000 square acres. And a lot of people hiked, walked their dogs, horseback riding, and other recreational activities. A lot of things happened there. Good at that. Okay, the -- how about the orange?
My name is Gavin. Do you have a day stump yourself?
Do I have a day stump myself? Sometimes we do. Sometimes I take things from the fire truck and hold the equipment into it. And yeah, I have a big pile of stuff myself.
Me.
How long is the Stoner River?
How long is the Stoner River? I'll leave that to the fire chief. Because you've probably been down the Stoner River.
It's long.
Do you -- me, do you know how long the Stoner River is? No?
I'm just gonna guess and say a few miles because the same river changes names a couple of times.
Right. Calvin? No?
Yeah, I think it's a three or four miles.
About three or four miles, I think. That was a good question. He stumped the panel.
How about this young lady in the yellow dress? Pretty yellow dress, by the way.
My name is Abby.
Hi Abby. What's your A.D.?
Do you take care of historical places?
Do you take care of historical places, question?
Places.
Oh, yes, we do. The town, we try to maintain historical buildings. But we also have a historical society in town that we work close with that is a separate organization. And they're dedicated to preserving things in Free Town, old buildings, old equipment, things like that. It's an interesting place to visit. We also have an historic commission along with a society that give us guidance on how to maintain old buildings and help us with funding and things like that. Did I answer your question? We'll go to the back row, young lady, right there. Hello.
My name is Nina.
Hi.
Do you tell people that I'm doing something bad what to do?
Yes, all the time. You know, sometimes it might be a traffic ticket where a warning is given out. And that warning hopefully corrects the driver's behavior. So they're not speeding or committing an infraction in the future. Other times, we give verbal warnings to people. They say, hey, what you're doing isn't right. You need to change. It's like your classroom. I'm sure your teachers give you warnings. I'm sure your teachers tell you when you're doing something wrong. And I know they tell you when you're doing something right. So that's kind of what we do. Only we do it out in a public forum rather than in a school. Okay, um, and lady in the blue coat in the back.
Arisha.
Hi.
How do people work with you?
I've been working on a daily basis. We have two members on staff, and we have a bunch on call.
This is her. How long have you lived in Free Town? I've lived in Free Town for 25 years. And believe it or not, as old as that sounds, I probably have not lived in Free Town nearly as much.
Good afternoon. Aiden Flood to the Office Citizen for Now, please. Aiden Flood to the Office Citizen for Now. Thank you. All right, that took my life away. Anyway, there are a lot of people that have been living in Free Town for a lot longer than 25 years. 25 years is actually a newcomer to Free Town.
Just a little follow-up on that. You have some families in this town that bought the original land that was for sale in 1643. And the same family has been living in that land for 200 or 300 years. But anyway, this gentleman in the green shirt.
How many jobs have you had before you became a selectman?
How many jobs have I had before I became a selectman? Well, I used to manage a Standard Time newspaper, Press Room, that was one. Rover Trailer Truck, two. I don't know, maybe four or five. But the last one I had for 28 years. So, and I retired from that. That's when I got into being a selectman.
My name is Ash.
Hello.
Do you pay?
Yes, I do. I pay.
A lot, a lot of money.
I don't know. I give my check to my wife. So I never...
Does she buy shoes?
Yes, we get paid, and we get equipment issued to us. Handcuffs, gun belts, guns. We get some money to buy clothing and uniforms. So we do get paid. Okay, right here in the front.
My name is Zehra. Do you get -- do people say their names when you help them?
One more time.
Do people say their names when they help them?
They use their banners when they're with you.
Sure. Your time.
My name is Jocelyn.
Hi Jocelyn.
Recently, the street address signs were replaced with a newer font. Do you think it was a waste of resources?
The street signs?
Yeah.
Read the question again.
Okay. Recently, the street address signs were replaced with a newer font. Do you think it was a waste of resources?
No.
Why?
I don't. Because the font has to be changed at times so all people can see it, whether you wear glasses or not glasses, whether you're older, whether your eyesight is good or bad or... So the street signs need to be changed. Those are one of the reasons why street signs need to be changed, so the font can change as well. Also, I think they're highlighted a little bit, so at night, they're easier to see. So no, I don't think that it was a waste of money. You're very welcome.
This young girl here with the green shirt. Achoo! Turquoise green. Emma? Don't be afraid. Okay, how about the gentleman here? Emma, think about it and move it. Maybe you can come up the next time, okay?
My name is Michael. Do you owe any services in Free Town?
Do I owe any services?
Yeah.
I do not owe any services in Free Town. I retired from what I was doing, and I just, I volunteered for the Department of Homeland Security and a few things like that, but don't owe any services, no.
My name is Julie. How many members are on the board of the...
There are three members on the board of selectmen. There are two men and one woman on the board of selectmen.
How many members of the police department?
There are 17 full-time police officers. There are seven part-time police officers. And we have four auxiliary police officers who are volunteers. There are four full-time dispatchers that answer your 911 calls. And there are about seven part-time dispatchers. And the part-time people fill in for the full-time people when the full-time people are out sick or on vacation and things like that. Okay, the gentleman in the black shirt.
What do you organize in Free Town?
What do I organize? I organize the fire department. I make sure we have personnel capable fighters. And I make sure we have brass that's good to go and is a mercy. I also maintain the emergency medical services for the town.
Didn't you just do something in town with like a meeting greet or you came to look at the fire apparatuses?
The trucks that truck over here to the area.
So he does do a lot of that stuff. You know, to bring it to schools or to have them... You guys were just at the FYAA. Who's in the Free Town Youth Athletic Association? Did you see all the police trucks and the fire trucks there? He does that kind of stuff too. So you guys can become familiar with the fire equipment that we have in town. So he does a lot more. He's just shy. Anybody shy here? Well, if I can find you, will you ask your question now? Come on up. No, no, you can come in. Come on. It's all good. All right, you can stay right there. Go ahead. What's your question?
Do you take your responsibility seriously?
I take my responsibility very seriously because there's consequences if you don't take your job seriously, right? If you don't get a good court, you take your test very seriously. You don't know. See, there are consequences if you don't take your test very seriously. Just like I have to take my job very seriously. There are about 9,000 people that live in the town of Free Town. And we're responsible for 9,000 people. So we want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can.
The little girl with the blue whatever is on your hair. I mean, the nice young lady.
My name is Nan.
How are you?
How do they be a selectman?
It's very interesting being a selectman. I had no political experience till I became a selectman. So there's a, it's a learning curve. But it's interesting because every day you can literally make decisions that affect your life, his life, my life, and your teacher's life. So a lot of thought goes into it. You find yourself thinking about it all day and you find yourself thinking about it in the evening because you always want to make the right decision. And the right decision is what's good for everybody. So it is interesting. Young lady in the blue sweatshirt.
My name is Callie.
Hi, Callie.
In your job, is it ever kind of stressful?
Yes. There's, there's different types of stress. You know, we only have so much money in the police budget. And we have to watch that carefully. So there are, there are demands to fill shifts with men or supplies to be purchased. And at times when it doesn't look like it might be enough money, you get a little stressed out. But all my gray hairs, you know, hair's from the stress. And there are other times where you're dealing with people who may have, um, some issues, medical issues. And they might want to try to harm you because they don't know any better. And that's stressful because you don't want to hurt them and you don't want to be hurt. Um, and then there are other times when you might have to drive a gleecock fast. And that's stressful because you don't want to crash the car or hurt anyone. So, yeah, there's, there's some stressful times. I'm sure that you all have stressful times too. Studying for a test, right? In the morning, getting ready for school if you're running a little late, a little stressful, right?
Okay, the young man in the black t-shirt way in the back.
My name is Kayle. How many years have you been a selectman?
Well, I've been fire chief for, for five years. I'm a fire clerk for thirty-two.
Carlton, how long have you been the police chief?
This is my sixteen years as the chief of police. Sixteen.
A year and a half as a selectman.
Nine years. Yeah, wow, that's my...
She's old, huh?
I like you.
This little girl jumping up and down. Do you have a question? Yay!
My name is Lacy. How many meetings do you go to?
Too many meetings. Actually, we have scheduled meetings every month. We like to meet twice a month on a Monday. And, um, we do them Tuesday, Monday. Mondays, then we have other meetings in between when things happen. Plus you have meetings that you go to with department heads and emergency meetings and things like that. But I'm going to guess, uh, on average, probably four or five a week.
Have I got you? I think we did.
My name is Saigon. How much was the helicopter?
I believe that, uh, the helicopter was donated to the town of Free Town. And I also believe that, uh, a trucking company in town went to the military base where the helicopter had been located and drove it several hundred miles back here to Free Town. And I don't think that trucking company charged the town anything. And I also understand that, uh, the company painted the helicopter as well and didn't charge the town. So I, I don't think there were any costs to obtain the helicopter.
Okay, lady in the front.
Logan, are you doing fireworks this year?
I believe I am fireworks.
You're definitely doing the fireworks this year? July third? July third. Who's going to the fireworks? Alright. Okay. Okay. How many have not answered the added question asked? Okay. Sorry, sweetie, I'll get you next time.
My name is Jordan.
Hi, Jordan.
Have you first played your dog when you started?
I was really nervous. You don't like when you, when you first start school, you're really nervous and you don't know anybody. You don't know if you're going to ask the right question or the wrong question. You're pretty, you're just a man. So yeah, of course I was nervous. That's just normal. That's natural. The more you do it, the more you get used to it. The more you get used to it, the more you're comfortable. Definitely nervous, so...
This young gentleman here in the blue shirt. Saying fine.
Do you get benefits?
Actually, the selectmen don't get any benefits. We're the only town employees that don't. Now, we don't get benefits. The selectmen are the lowest-paid people because it's a part-time position. With zero benefits. Nothing.
Do you ever get vacation?
What's that?
Do you ever get vacation?
Vacations.
Yes, I, I get quite a few vacation days and I'm looking forward to some of those vacation days coming up. I'd like to go on vacation to Florida or New Hampshire. And I go with my wife and my, my daughters. I have three beautiful daughters and we try to include those in our vacation plans.
Okay, young lady in the white.
My name is Laura. What is the most difficult thing in your job?
Of those two things I have, I guess would be probably dealing with good medicals because something's correct and it tends to wear on you. Um, and of course, fire though is bad because people lose their property and things. But it's actually a lot of things that are difficult in my job, but you know, you just keep going, here it comes.
Go ahead.
My name is Katarina. Do you think our town is a safety town?
With these two guys, am I right? Absolutely. I feel safe every time I put my head on the pillow. Because I know that they're going to protect the town, both fire department and police department. Do you feel safe?
Yes.
Okay. That's what counts.
This young lady, number eleven, I think it is. Oh, really?
That's why we didn't speak of law.
My name is Bessa. What do you have to do to become a selectman?
Well, I kind of answered that before you. You have to have, you have to want to serve the people. One, that's a big thing. Because it's really not easy. It's pretty complicated because you have to run for elections and that takes a lot of time. You have to campaign. But you have to live in Free Town and want to be a selectman and go for it. All the way in the back in the corner.
I am Jane.
Hi, Jane.
How long have you been a police chief?
Well, it was a long time. I would say probably about fifteen years. You start out at the bottom like anybody else as a volunteer. And then you move up to a part-time officer. Then you move up to a, a full-time officer. And then there are, there are interviews and tests for the police chief's position. So it's important, uh, that you prepare and study for those, just like you study for your test, right? Everybody studies for their test, right? Very important.
It takes, well, let me just put it in context here. How long does it take you, for you until you graduate high school? About, about twelve years, right? And then adding kindergarten and preschool in there. So that's about fourteen years. So as long as it takes you to go to graduate is as long as it takes to become a police chief. It's a long time.
Okay, young lady in the purple.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ava.
Hi, Ava.
Do you have to tell what other jobs do?
Do I have to tell the...
Do you have other jobs?
Oh, yes. I have a lot of jobs between being a paramedic, being a fire, being a fire chief.
No, you have to tell what other jobs do.
Oh, yeah. That's what I do. I tell people what to do.
Thank you.
I'm Samantha.
I'm Samantha.
If you could do one thing to improve the town, would it be...
If I could do one thing to improve the town, just one? That is really a hard question. In the nine years I've been doing that, no one's ever asked me that before. If I could do one thing to improve the town, it would take, what, what we're doing now is studying all the buildings. It's called a feasibility study. It's a big word for just making sure that all the buildings are in, are up to, up to code and up to par and feel like some. So if I could do one thing in town, it would take that feasibility study that's going to tell us what buildings need improvement and carry that out. What that means is if the feasibility study says that the town hall and the police department need to be, need to have new buildings, that's what I would want to do. Thank you.
Oop, this guy right here, number ninety-four. You, yep.
Do you go into the forest and see if things are going all right?
Oh, absolutely. I'm a, I'm a hiker. I probably hike, if I can, six, eight, maybe ten miles a week. So I spend time in the Free Town forest. I like to take my dogs for hikes in the forest. And around the, as long as it's on all the, I find that very interesting to do. One of my favorite occupations, actually. How about this young lady in the striped shirt? Yep. Striped shirt, striped. We'll catch you the next time around.
Do you have the power over the town?
I don't, I don't think I have power over the town. That's a good question. We, we have as much power as the people of the town let us have. And we have as much power as the law allows us to have. And we have as much power as the, the judges and the courts allow us to have. So we, we have our own laws. We have laws we have to follow. That's a good question.
And my name is Caroline.
Hi. Okay, way back there, I think.
My name is Sandra. And do you think, um, the town could clean up brought by a rock and I'm particularly, they make it a beautiful place?
Well, we should probably help out, but we're not really, it's, they're actually owned by the state. Said last week on that we could help out and we'd like to see it improved. Maybe the selectmen can get a hold of somebody at the state level to improve that for you.
Okay, if you have an opportunity, go ahead.
My name is Taylor. Do you sort of work for the government?
Yes, we do. We work for the government.
Thank you.
We all work for the government.
Anybody here hasn't had a chance? Please, sir. My favorite part of being a selectman is after you think about a decision that's had, that has to be made in maybe weeks or days or hours. Making the right decision and going home and having a cup of tea and saying, you know, I finally did the right thing. In my heart of hearts, I think I did the right thing, something that's good for everybody. And that's the best part of being a selectman.
Hello, I'm Sarah.
Good afternoon.
Are you like in charge of Free Town's schools?
I am not in charge of the schools. You, you would have your teachers are in charge of the classrooms. And the principal is in charge of this school. And then you would have a superintendent in charge of all of the schools in the district.
Okay, knit sock shirt.
My name is Karen Fur.
How are you?
Do the selectmen have cool things?
Do the selectmen have cool things? You bet they do. They got a lot of things.
What kind of things?
Oh, hang on a minute.
They got a nice office? We have an office everywhere. Nice assistant. We have iPhones, iPads, that type of thing. Because we might be paperless, but adding paper costs the town a lot more money. So we try to do things as efficiently as we can. Some of the computers and things we all take for granted we have.
Alright, we're going to do one more question for each of us and then we're going to wrap it up, okay? So, oh, oh, finally.
Hunter.
Hunter, hello.
Do you get to construct buildings?
I personally don't get to construct buildings. But like I was just talking about a little while ago, we could see some construction going on in town. We could see a new town hall. We could see a new police department. So that would be kind of awesome because we do need those things in town. So we would be in charge of hiring somebody to do the construction. Do you own a construction business? No, okay.
Cool guy and he's glad and he's with you. At you, you know.
Lacy.
Hello.
What's the population of people who work at the town hall?
I would guess about forty, give or take, one or two.
Thank you.
Young man with the red t-shirt. Yeah, you. Say the best of us.
Kathy, one, two, three. What's your favorite place to be out at profile rock or your grave? Something like that.
My favorite place in Free Town is Hathaway Park. What's your favorite place in Free Town?
Probably a profile rock, something like that.
Okay, um, the young lady.
Oh, my name is Lucas Penny. I almost forgot to tell you that.
Young lady in the striped shirt over there.
What goes on in town?
What goes on in town? A lot of stuff goes on in town. Town's like a big beehive. There's, it's constantly moving all the time and people are doing things. We have construction going on. We have, uh, people in schools, people at work, a lot of stuff.
I'm ready.
I just want to thank you guys. You all have been very cooperative, very quiet and very attentive. And I just want to thank you so much. And I hope that we answered all of your questions. Thank you. See you at the fireworks.
Thank you very much.